What that was all about?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to interment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
The invocation this evening will be given by Commissioner Mansfield.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, God, for your abundant mercies and your goodness that is over us, Father, and we just pray that you would just continue to bless our county, bless our employees, bless our citizens, God. We just beseech your almighty hand and face for your favor, God. We look to you as the author and perfecter of our faith, and we just ask that you give us wisdom to do the people's business to the best of our abilities tonight, God, and just pray for, thank you for your precious blood that covers us, and thank you for these great United States of America we live in. Amen.
The pledge will be given by our county clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, call the robe.
Each Commissioner records your presence.
We have everyone present tonight, 24, which, of course, will be 13 for a majority and 18, pardon me, yeah, 18 for two-thirds, I suppose. Uh, 16, okay. Well, I have a disclaimer. I sat here all day long today in the ad hoc allocations committee, even ate here, went to basketball, and then came here. So it's been a long day. My disclaimer is I don't know what I'm doing tonight, so don't make it tough for me, okay? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda? Okay.
I have a couple of issues to the changes to the agenda.
All right.
One is that under report of the chair that we had a recognition for the Gallauden High School academic team.
All right. Without objection, we will add that.
And I have one more. I'd like to switch nine and 10 so that recognition of the public is after the report of the chair.
Ah, okay. Any objection to that? All right, do I have a motion for the agenda?
I'm sorry. Resolution 2411-25 is, it's very important that Mr. Sittler is here for that. I would like to ask to postpone that till the next meeting.
We have already, I've talked to the attorney and we're going to take that off.
Okay.
So please make note of that, folks, that that may require a closed meeting, so that will be taken off. That was 2411, what was that?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five will be held until next month. Our county attorney is in the hospital, or just got out of the hospital with kidney stones. All right. Motion to approve? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Approval of the consent agenda? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Pardon? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
Did someone seek recognition?
I did. Mr. Chairman.
All right, oh, okay.
I'd like to remove 2411-02 from the consent agenda.
241102. What are you wanting to do? All right, all right. Please make note of the fact, according to our rules, a Commissioner can do that. 241102 will be a part of the Budget Committee Commissioner Sho. All right. Did we have a motion? We had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Approval of minutes for October 21st?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, then we're going to have recognition of the recognition of the public after, after the next. So now we're to the report of the chair. And we have the Veteran's Service Report that is attached to your agenda, docketing the financial statement memo. You have that as a part of your agenda. And now we have certificates of recognition, and I'll call on Commissioner Baker Ring to recognize the Gallauden High School academic team.
Thank you. The team will come up here, please. Oh, okay. Thank you. Before I present this, I'd like to say something. While I was teaching at Gallauden High School, I worked with this team. They have practices on Wednesday afternoons and on Thursday mornings. They compete all over the state and as well as Kentucky. This is the A Team. And I'll explain a little bit more after I make the, do the resolution. So let me read the resolution. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 18th day of November 2024, does hereby recognize and congratulate the Gallauden High School academic team for finishing in first place out of 16 teams from 13 schools, participating in the WCTE Television Annual Academic Bowl Double Elimination Tournament that was held November 7th to November 9th, 2024, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Teichner. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, if any parents want to come forward, take a picture, you're certainly welcome to.
This is Brian Hoover, who's their advisor. I wanted to mention that in this competition, there were schools from five, five teams from Sumner County out of six, out of the 30, 16 teams. Gallauden had an A Team and a B Team. Gallauden's A Team came in first. Gallauden's B Team came in fifth. The B Team is made up of all freshmen except for one senior. So those are freshmen. So it looks mostly freshmen. And this team is made up of three freshmen, excuse me, three seniors and one freshman. I'm sorry, junior. Okay, I'm sorry. I think about the B Team again. All right, so we have Andrew Miller, we have Bryce Calhoun, we got Marcy McDaniel, we've got Gareth Turner, and Mr. Hoover is the, I get the wrong name. What's Andrew? All right, I'm sorry, Andrew Wright, excuse me. I don't know why I'm so flustered. Anyway, and Brian Hoover, who's the advisor. I've worked with this team for years. I'm still working with this team, even though I'm retired. It's just something I love to do. And this group has been very good. They've done lots of, they've won lots of competitions and done very well. So just want to give them an opportunity to be congratulated by us. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Schoeff has a certificate of recognition for Bob Schrieker.
Mr. Schrieker, will you please come up here, please? Thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and read this, and then I'll have a couple, couple notes. The Sumner County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 18th day of November 2024, does hereby honor and commend Mr. Bob Schrieker for his contributions to our veterans and his service to his fellow Americans and Sumner County residents. I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign.
So in just a second, Mr. Schrieker's going to have a couple notes, but I just wanted to maybe lead with a couple things. So we do a lot of honoring the folks for academic achievements or long years of service, various accolades, but, you know, there are also smaller everyday acts of service that are equally deserving of recognition. So I want to outline a couple of those that have truly impacted individual human beings who live in our community. So Mr. Schrieker has delivered wheelchairs and other accessible vehicles to, to some of our vets personally out of his own time. He's personally helped transport a homeless veteran to interviews and has washed this individual's clothes. So these, this is the type of person that we have before us here. And I've got several other items, but I think as opposed to letting me rattle on and on, I'll let him speak.
Thank you. Well, it's an honor to be here this evening and, and receive this certificate and this award. Many folks have been brought to our attention. They're at the Vietnam Veterans of America and via Jeff, Veteran Service Officer, and it's an honor to be able to reach out and fill the need that a veteran might have that we don't hear about. And they just come and ask, and then we can provide. And it is, it is so great to be able to give that veteran a little bit more independence and help him to stay at home for a little bit longer in their life. It's an honor to do that and look forward to doing it more and more as the years go long. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Miller has recognition for Mr. Raymond Neal.
So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolu, or the proclamation first. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 18th day of November 2024, does hereby honor and commend the late Raymond Edward Ed McNeil, Neil, sorry, for his many years of service to Special Needs Sports Foundation and the Special Needs Community of Sumner County, Tennessee. I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign.
So a couple of more things about Mr. Neal. He actually, he graduated from East Nashville High School and he attended MTSU, and he founded the Special Needs Sports Foundation, Incorporated. Where, and he was the chairman and president. He showed his love for the special kids of all ages and was known as Coach Ed. He was a volunteer coach for the Hendersonville Parks Raptors Program for over 25 years and started the Sumner County Special Olympics Basketball and won gold medals with his teams. Hundreds of adults and children with disabilities have been through the program started by Mr. Neal, and their lives were impacted for the better. You want to say a few words, Mr. Neal?
I just want to thank everyone. This has been a great thing for me and my husband. We founded this because we have a special needs son who at this time is in the hospital. But I just want to say thank you to everyone. Ed loved these kids. We love these kids so much, and we're going to try to keep this going as long as we can. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like for the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Soccer Team, Soccer Girls to come forward. And parents, you're welcome to come up close and take pictures if you want. I also would like for the Assistant Principal and anyone else on the staff that's here tonight to come forward. Coaches, trainers, anyone that's here. I am really proud to recognize this group tonight. They are very special to our county in that they have done some pretty amazing feats on the soccer field. Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in the regular session on this, the 18th day of November 2024, does hereby honor and congratulate the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Girls Soccer Team for their Tennessee State Championship win. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Becker, who is our noted Commissioner Specialist on Soccer. So I have some things that I want to mention about these young ladies. It's pretty amazing, so I hope you'll pay close attention. The Lady Hawks had a program high of 21 wins this season. They had 125 goals compared to only 16 that they allowed. They only gave up two goals to Class A opponents, and that was in the T double S double A State Tournament Playoffs. The Lady Hawks have appeared in five straight T double S double A State Championship Games. They have appeared in five of those games, winning three of the last four. The Lady Hawks were led by six seniors. Four of those seniors played in all five state championship games. That's, I'd like for you ladies, when if I mention your name, I want you to take a giant step forward, if you would, if you're here. That would be Sidney Arissa. At work. All of the seniors? Please step forward. Okay, you'll step forward. Okay. And three other notable players, and as I call your name, if you'd step forward, Jalen Baxter, who is a sophomore. She's a center midfielder. She led the team with 29 goals and 15 assists, including three goals in state tournament play. Selected as Most Valuable Player for T double S double A Division One Class A State Championship Game. Gianna Cruz, Senior Captain, 27 goals, 14 assists from the striker position. Reagan Hudson, Jr., 14 goals and 19 assists from the striker position. Reagan has scored in three straight championship games. Let's give them one more round of applause. That's pretty amazing. All right, and I want to add this before I turn it over to the coach to recognize those who assisted the team. These young ladies are, they are the state Single A Champions, but that's saying a great deal because the Merrill Hyde Magnet School is the, next to the smallest school in the state of Tennessee in Class A. So they had fewer people to be able to participate in the program. Also, their total grade point average from 4.0 as a team is 3.828. I'm going to introduce to you the coach who happens to be, well, he's a soccer, a great soccer coach, and in his part-time, I think he's an attorney. But Coach Bentley has been there and has built this team and has done an amazing job as a coach, and I'll ask him to introduce everyone else if he will.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyde. You know, at the end of every soccer season, there's five teams in all classifications that end with tears of joy and smiles. And it's always a pleasure and an honor when you're on the right side of that and to see that excitement and that joy. Obviously, we've been on the opposite side of that, too. And, and you learn from those times as well. But it's been an exciting time for the Lady Hawk program. You know, I was talking with Commissioner Hyde earlier, and, you know, 14 years ago, you know, Merrill Hyde practiced in the field in front of the school and played their games at 3:00 at Drake's Creek Park because rec and club had the, had the fields after. And it took a committed effort from that current administration, school administration, on through, on through this current school administration, as well as a commitment from past commissioners and past commissions from a dollar standpoint, and also from the Board of Education. It took a collective effort to move this program to where it is. We only play in the regular season two Single A schools. Everybody we play are two and three As. We played CPA this year, Green Hill. You know, it's, it's been an honor to watch the program grow and, and to get the respect from other very, very good and very quality programs across the state. And, you know, it's, it's, it's an honor to be a part of this with these girls. I'd be remiss not to mention Mikey Oaks. We've been doing this together for 11 years. He is a Gallauden graduate, as well as Megan Reewa, also 11 years. We'll give you 10. Okay. Hendersonville graduate. So, and of course, Dr. Correll. You did not, but, you know, it's, it's less, it's, it's less about us as coaches, and it's more about the work and the effort and the energy and the focus that these girls put in, and the way they're able to balance that with the academics that are required at the school. The girls just don't show up for practice and step on the field to play a game. You know, they, they spend a lot of time developing and working on speed and agility. They do a lot of time, spend a lot of time focusing on the mental aspects of the game. There's a lot of aspects that go into developing a program that, that has had the success that, that we've been fortunate to have. And, you know, we're looking forward to hopefully be standing in front of you again next year. So, thank you.
Did, did anyone who came up under recognition, did you? Oh, okay, all right. All right. It's time now for recognition of the public, and we have first Ms. Laura Baker.
Laura Baker, 424 AV Wade Road, Portland. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to hear, Mr. Chairman, that you're feeling a little sleepy tonight because after 10 years of coming up here on and off, tonight you might actually gavel me out of order. Actually, I'm just up here feeling in a really good mood for the last two weeks and... Or 11 days, I should... 13 days, excuse me. And I just wanted to wish you all a really happy Thanksgiving. God bless you all.
Jill Farnelius.
Hi, good evening. Jill Farnelius. I live at 180 Cobbler Circle in Hendersonville. I came here tonight with two requests regarding the specific appointment of Eric Stockton to the Library Board in addition to general transparency regarding the Board application process. First, easily for about a year now, the public is still seeking transparency regarding the application process and how the Committee on Committees is selecting which application it brings to the full commission. We know so many individuals that are not brought up in those meetings for consideration. Why? So when I heard about tonight's meeting, I went back to look at a few meetings to see if I can figure it out. Referencing specifically the February 2024 meeting here at the Commission, a Board member spoke and stated that appeals to credentials don't really matter because that there's no magic license that makes one all-knowing, that there is no magic incarnation that makes you qualified this, although he would welcome some bro time. He further stated that if you need a credential to tell you that putting pornography in front of children is wrong, then I would suggest your credential isn't worth the paper it is printed on. He further confirmed nothing unconstitutional or illegally... Or illegal is happening, nor has there been any formal adjudication, so no one should be scared or intimidated. That if there was anything to be challenged, it would have already occurred after the policy, the collection policy had passed, and I believe that still remains true today. I agree with him that the libraries have not harbored pornography and that this is why we haven't seen any formal deletions. But I did want to raise a question tonight that I hope the Commission can use its authority to clarify before appointing any further Library Board members. Listening to some of the public Board meetings, there still is no guidance from the Library Board on how to implement the collection policy when there might be questionable books in circulation. There has been enough wording from those Board meetings to suggest that if there was a question regarding whether a book should be moved according to their new policy, that it could just be removed without formal challenge. This breeds the question on whether there have been any informal deletions made outside of a process since there doesn't seem to be a process. I request the Board provide that transparency since we continue to see applications for new Board members being considered that keep referencing wanting our libraries to be safe havens, as well as about the books that may have been deleted when implementing the collection policy after it was passed. So that leads me to my second point. Mr. Stockton spoke directly before me the first time I came to speak to y'all and spoke about First Amendment violations and about how concerns that... The concerns the public have been brought to you are just a play on words. Further, he stated, quote, "While a case could be made that the First Amendment rights are being violated, it is in the best interest of people to eliminate any type of danger that could occur." Again, this was at a February 2024 meeting. I request that you do not approve Mr. Stockton's appointment as the only mention of the value he stated he wants to bring to ensure... Is to ensure that libraries are safe haven, and he wants to protect the fabric of the community. I think that we've confirmed that there is no material in our libraries that are unsafe. The public is aware that the Library Board currently has requested to participate in the Friends Board meetings, specifically their budget subcommittee meetings. I'm unsure the reason for this request, but I do find it curious that the main background of the applicant being brought to you today is in finance. Finally, I just think that we really need better transparency on which applications are be considered so then you all know that you are building a library board that can truly serve all members of its community. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Judge Ron Blatman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the Commission, greetings. I come to you tonight on two matters. They're both on the Legislative Committee meeting, and I apologize, Mr. Mansfield, because of Recovery Court on Monday and Tuesday night. I'm unable to get to your committee meeting while it's going on, so I have not had an opportunity to actually appear to speak as to these two matters. On 24/11/16, the reappointing of judicial managers, I just can't echo the importance of that position and what it does for our county. We just got back from a judicial conference where a lot of the judges were in envy of our judicial commissioners and the job that they do, and I would encourage you on that reappointment. But more importantly, on 24/11/17, I'm the one that that's on the docket for. It's a situation where I asked the Board of Judiciary for an opinion when the probation department straight line reported to me. I felt from the very beginning that I had a conflict where you have a probationer who picks up a probation violation, and he's saying, "I told my probation officer this thing," and my probation officer, who is my employee, is saying, "No, he didn't," or "No, she didn't." And in addition to establishing what the facts are, I have to determine the credibility of the witnesses. And you're putting me... Was putting me in an awkward position of the credibility of my own employee. And so I asked the Board of Judiciary, and they're the ones that issued that opinion letter that is attached to your packet tonight. And speaking of Mr. Hyde, the day after I got this, or very closely after I got this, I was removed from out my direct line supervision. I would encourage you all tonight, because I have done some investigating on my own to assign this under the county mayor's position. That's where Macon County, Trousdale County, Rutherford County, the counties that are around us that have a county probation, they report to the county mayor's office, and that's a... That department, and I'd like to say through my guidance, but through Judge Hunter's guidance as well before me, we now have a situation where we... I created a director's position that you were kindly to fund. That person who serves as director is responsible for everything. That is a self-sufficient, self-funding department. It really is just... They need an elected official to report to, and so I have reached out and spoken with Mayor Isabel, who's not here tonight, and told him my feelings about this and the research that I had done regarding of who on the surrounding areas of the county probations, who do they report to? And I come to you tonight with that recommendation and that plea that when you get to that resolution, 24/17, that you make county probation report to the county mayor. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Eric Stockton.
Thank you. My name is Eric Stockton. I'm at 445 Cummings Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. And I'm here because they'll be voting whether to put me on the Library Board this evening. As you heard, young lady, before that... Before the... Talk about what I said back in February. I didn't... I had to think back about that, and it's not exactly what I said. What I said is this. Many people that want sexually explicit material in the library that are fighting to keep it in there are saying that it's a First Amendment right to have that. I heard that from a Sumner County School Board member say that. And I said, "The First Amendment rights do not include sexually explicit material." That's a fact, okay? So I just want to clear that up. There is no violation of First Amendment rights by removing material that may be explicit for children. I know there's some people that may not like me doing this, and there are a lot of people that are in support of that. I've had people say I'm not qualified to make these decisions based on, you know, I don't have a accreditation for the ALA. I don't think I need accreditation from the ALA to know what's sexually explicit material and what is not. I think that's common sense, right? For our kids. And I know there's been a rule put in place to take care of that. I'm just asking to be a part of the Board. I know they've talked about there's not enough men on the Board. They've also said we'd like fathers or somebody from a different perspective. I'm a business owner. I've been a resident here for 20... Over 23 years. I've been a business owner here. I have employees that work for me. I'm a financial planner. I own a financial planning company here. I have four children. I've been an active baseball coach in this community for 15 years. I'm very, very familiar with what people want in this community and what this... How they want things to be in their libraries and different things that their kids are exposed to. And part of that is, my wife and I have homeschooled for many years. I have a college freshman who is on academic scholarship and baseball scholarship right now, and so I think we've done a pretty good job of handling that, and we are very aware of what's going on in our libraries. My wife called up in 2019 to ask if the Drag Queen Story Hour was coming to our library, and she was met with heavy resistance, very heavy resistance. She was hung up on, in fact. I find that appalling, and so sometimes when things happen in our community, I think people awake and they get involved in things. And I think over the last two weeks, we found out, the American people made it very clear, including 70% of the population in Sumner County made it very clear that we've gotten off track with common sense. And so I'm just asking the Board... I know there are people that won't vote for me, and that's fine. I get that. You have your political reasons for doing that. That's okay. But I'm just asking for common sense in our community. I'm asking for common sense in our libraries. I'm asking for common sense for our children. That's it. And I humbly ask the Commission to vote me in, and I will uphold common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlena Allmiller.
Hi, I'm Charlena Allmiller. I live at 143 Roland Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I am also here to speak about the Library Board member. Seat that's up. I would also appreciate you guys voting in favor of common sense. I just feel like the result would not be the same as what the previous commenter asked for, which would be to vote for him. I would encourage all of you to watch the Library Board meeting from last Wednesday, if you have not read it yet, or if you have not watched it yet, because in that meeting, they talk about a personnel policy, and then a few minutes later, they deflect from that personnel policy that they want to make sure is non-discriminatory for all the library And they take facts after a library director evaluation and did not let the library director speak on her own behalf or even ask a question. There is something seriously wrong with the Library Board in this county, and the process by which it is being filled is not transparent. And to the extent that this is a public office, there could be arguments that you guys should be posting these and making it available for everybody, making sure that everybody knows what the applicant... Who is applying for them. So then that process can be transparent because if it is a term that cannot be removed from, then there are arguments that that's different than an at-will employment. That means that that could have a property interest in there, even if it's not compensatory. And also what it means is that these people are doing supervisory acts towards our county employees that we could be liable for under any employment lawsuits. But at the end of the day, what it means is that there are people that are on this Board that are lording over our library directors. They are not making millions of dollars. They're not amongst the highest paid of our department heads in this county. They are just trying to bring books and the love of reading to our community, and they are treated like dirt by our Library Board. So I would encourage you to please not fill this position with the person that has been recommended. Look at this process because we are doing... We are treating our public servants terribly, and that is because of who you are putting in the Library Board. So whenever you say, "Well, I'm not doing it," look in the mirror because yes, you are if you're voting to put these people in there that are doing these terrible things. And please take the time to watch these meetings. If it's hard for you to watch, imagine how hard it would be to feel that coming down on you. Somebody's bringing up something that happened five years ago. If somebody called me up and I worked at a library and said, "When is the drag show library reading hour coming here?" I'd hang up, too, because I would think the person was a crackpot. Maybe I wouldn't hang up. I'd be like, "Oh, we're not having that." I mean, but that was five years ago as well, and so it sounds like this person still hasn't been... So everything that I saw last week in the Library Board meeting is going to continue, and it's going to get bad. People are not contacting you anymore because they feel like they are not heard. I reached out to people who I know that have an interest in the Library Board, and I said, "Hey, have you guys submitted any emails to the County Commission?" And they said, "We don't even want to speak about it now. We are afraid to speak. Some people might come and speak. Some people might email." People are afraid of you, and while people can talk about the national election, that's fine. I want you to look at our numbers here in Sumner County. We are the same. We are the same that we were a month ago. Our numbers have not shifted. We are still the same people in our hearts, and we should not be treating people like this, and you should not be appointing people that treat people like this. Also, so I would hope that you would please not appoint Eric Stockton to the Library Board tonight and instead improve the process, make it more transparent, put the little link back on there to accept applications, get them to a central depository in the county clerk's office, let everybody see who's there, and then you all can make the decision on what is best for our libraries. Also, my next item is for the $20,000 for the Millersville EMS. I understand the need for it, but I just cannot believe that you guys signed a memo that's a blank check, and here we are. This is just for architecture fees. Thank you.
Rebecca Goff. Oh, okay. All right. That concludes our speakers. You will have... You will have in your packet the written reports that are filed by county officials and also notaries, public... Election of Notary Publix and bond approval. We will need to put that on the Board.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Mansfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we'll confirm that by machine.
Anyone that's voting, wish you the best.
We have 21 votes. There are three people, if you choose not to...
I think that they got involved in the motion.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right. Okay. If there are no nays, we will assume this is a unanimous vote. Anyone voting nay, anyone. All right. We are going to take... It's been a little bit now. We're going to take, before we get into committee, it's just like 15 minutes. We're going to take, before we get into committee, it's just like 15 minutes. All right. Thank you. I believe, I honestly believe we're on schedule for a 9:15 to 9:30. So let's hope and pray for that. All right. Committees, Health and Emergency Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The only thing we really had was we voted to amend unanimously, we voted to amend the ECC personnel policies and procedures. And you can find that in there. But that's really the only thing, so.
I so moved.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose light sign. Education?
No report.
Highway? General Operations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. 2411-14 is a resolution to adopt construction and renovation of county-owned buildings policy. This was brought forward by, recommended by our finance director after especially last month's meeting in dealing with some of these construction capital projects that we've gone through that didn't go through committee. And the process didn't go through committee as far as answering questions. I think we could save a lot of time if we go through the right steps and procedures, both from a statutory standpoint and also according to our rules. So that's basically, this was written by our finance director, and I think it's a great policy and a great way to keep us on track, to make sure that we don't waste a lot of time frivolously on things that should have gone through the committee process. So I so moved for adoption.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question on this. Who would do the project management under this policy?
Do you have an answer to that, Mr. Chairman?
I'm not sure right now. I'll defer to the finance department on this one, because the, I guess, the previous quote-unquote, I guess, project manager was a grant writer. That was under the finance department originally and going back to the finance department. So I don't have an answer to that.
I would ask the finance director if he has a comment.
It would be handled through the finance department based upon the requests from departments and approval of the committee and the commission, based on what they've outlined. If you read through the policy, basically, the departments make the request. We help them prepare a packet. It goes to Gen Ops for certain projects. It's approved the appropriation project, and it's ultimately as approved to bid and ran through and just completed. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Wynn?
So ask me the question. If I can't answer it, I'll refer it.
So we have a project manager? Is that, they're in the finance department, if I'm understanding that correctly?
I'm understanding that it'll be in the finance department.
Okay. All right.
Is that correct?
The grant administrator slash project manager, we're replacing it with a grant administrator, project accountant, so they will be doing. It's similar to what's going on right now with the opioid committee. The opioid works on various projects, and we have a grant accountant slash project manager that works with that committee, dealing, and there's several of them that's on it. And then he comes back to finance based on, you know, their request and directives, and it goes through the commission. So it'd be similar. They would work with the department and get the information over to general ops and help get the packet ready to go up to the commission, assist the committees.
So I was a little concerned, because I don't, like, what is the county mayor's role within this new policy? How does the county mayor fit into that?
I don't know that it's considered that the county mayor would have the staff or the ability to do all the building projects. And I think that's where they're coming from, because it slipped through the cracks this time. Now, I believe that's what they're thinking.
Gotcha. Well, here's my concern, is the county mayor is the agent of the county and is to oversee the day-to-day operations. And this, a project management would fall within the day-to-day operations of the county. But we have a policy that excludes the county mayor, the county mayor's office. And we moved the position to a finance office. So I just, it appears we are ignoring even like TCA codes that would, that clearly outline is the mayor's the agent and is the one that would carry out the will of this body in that day-to-day fashion. So I've just got some concerns there with how that is, it's not outlined in there. And it appears as though the mayor has been completely cut out of the whole process. And I don't know if, like, we just expect them to sign off on stuff without having any kind of inputs or oversights. But that's just, that's my thoughts on this. You know, I think we're getting out of our lane a little bit and cutting the mayor out on this.
The finance director, how?
Commissioner.
May the finance director.
I can answer his question.
Oh, go ahead.
Two things. One, the actual concepts would come from the mayor or the department. And actually, if you look at TCA 57-106, says, "The counting buildings are to be erected and kept in order and repaired at the expense of the county under the direction of the county legislative body. And it may levy a tax for this purpose," is what the statute says. It's case county legislative, not mayor.
All right. The commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones. Oh, are you finished?
No, but you can come back to me if you want to go somewhere else. No, and I understand the TCA code and what it says there. And I appreciate the finance director pointing that out. I did get a clarification from C-TAS on that TCA code, because I questioned it. And it really comes back to, as far as from a project management perspective, that the county mayor should be the day-to-day overseer of the projects. And I know we'll point to this TCA code, and it appears as though we're somewhat cherry-picking language out of a TCA code to justify this. But it's improper. We're improperly applying a TCA code, which is clearly around financing and the funding of projects and not the actual management of projects. So I'm just voicing that concern, and that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And before we get into this, let me caution everyone. We don't need to get into a debate here about this. We need to find information about it in order to make a decision. We could talk about this all night long. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I could speak a little bit to maybe alleviate Commissioner Wynn's concerns. That was not the intention of this resolution. And I'll remind the chairman of Gen Ops, he may have forgotten, but we also discussed that it's typical within the private sector to hire, to make it in the contract to where the project manager is supplied by the firm that is doing the construction. And they report directly to the general ops committee for the monthly reports. They could also report to the mayor also. But what we found lacking, and the courthouse is a great example, was our project manager quit six months away from getting finished, and we were slapped with a million dollars of extra things that we were not aware of. And we found out about these big hits on a monthly basis, when we should have been looking at them weekly. So it's not, I don't believe it's the county mayor's job to oversee construction projects. He has enough on his plate. Once the building is completed, it's his job to maintain them. But a construction project is outside of his scope of expertise. And we're lucky enough to have on some committees some people that are familiar with the construction process. And that's why it was important to write our contracts better and have project managers that are included within the contract, so we don't have to pay a project manager to be on staff every once in a while when we build buildings there of use. But when we're not building buildings, they're just on staff doing nothing. So there's ways to handle this, and we need to reflect on that with the private sector and take notes from how they operate. So that was the intentions of the resolution. It was just to make it more streamlined and nothing trying to skirt the authority of the mayor or anything. We found that it was lacking, the information coming was lacking, because there were so long in-between meetings when we would get a report from the mayor, which is third-hand information, because it was coming from a construction company to our project manager, to the mayor, and then to general operations. So this would help streamline that process. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do, I am going to try to add value in terms of information to this conversation and not the debate per your note, Mr. Chairman. But I do want to just maybe give a little bit of timeline. And the bottom line upfront here is that this is just the truth. I think the county has not ever built out a true project management function. And this is not to disparage any individual who's ever served in that role. It's just never really existed beyond kind of one position. And that position, this is not, this is nothing new to this commission. This has been going on for over a decade, per some digging that I've personally done on this. Who owns project management has been a question. One, what is project management for the county? And two, who owns the project management within the county? Has been a hot potato for three or four commissions at this point. I would also note that if you look at the private sector, private sector doesn't always figure it out either. You could look at some companies and PMOs, report up, do indeed report up through finance. You find other ones that report up to the COO that ultimately reports to the CEO. So it is rare that a project management office or a project management individual will report to a board, unless it's for a really special project. So the point here is that I don't know that the private sector's going to solve this one for us, because they don't agree on it either. I just want to note that, you know, that's the top-level 50,000-foot view. So we've got a problem. We haven't really figured out how to solve it. Last year, I made a Last year, I made a motion in budget to try to be, begin to start a nascent PMO shop, uh, first under the county executive. Then we argued to put it over to finance, and I was fine with that, too. It didn't really matter in my mind where, where it sat. It just mattered that the function existed. So, ultimately, because we couldn't agree, scrapped the whole thing. Um, and now, here we are again. So, I just want to note that in the next budget, uh, cycle, I'm going to again propose, what we really have here are two functions. We have a grant writer and a grant administrator and a financial analyst. There's that type of work being done. And there is also project management. And these are separate things. Can they be done by one person? Yes, but they are ultimately, these are ultimately separate functions that require separate skill sets. And that, in my mind, the fact that we are trying to combine all these into one role is what's caused this problem. So, to get back to the point at hand, the reason that I think this MOU exists now is to solve for a stopgap measure that we are trying to do. We recognize that there's a problem. We recognize that there's a gap. And as a stopgap, we are placing, um, a joint project management and grant writing, grant administrator position under finance. I think that in the next, uh, budget cycle, we need to add another position, and it will, I would argue that it probably should go under the county mayor, but we can talk about that later. But for now, because those things are being administered under finance, I believe that that is the purpose of this agreement. It, is it a perfect solution? No, but as of right now, we, we don't really have the function, so we're doing the best we can with what we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I appreciate the comments of the previous two speakers, and so it's, uh, I'm in total agreement. I think it's highly unusual to, to have, uh, you know, a, a project manager report to a body who meets once a month. You know, uh, the commissioner from District Twenty-three talked about the, the weekly updates required. You need somebody who's here on more than a monthly basis to interact with that. Uh, unless I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, and you can correct me if I am, please do, but our authority begins and ends when this meeting starts and stops. Uh, outside of that, we have no authority. Uh, your authority is with your vote on this body and not outside of here on a, you know, random Tuesday where you're wanting to administer the task of a project manager. Uh, so I, I think it's, it's just improperly placed. It's improperly structured, and I don't, I don't agree with it. Uh, I think it's, it's, it's just not a good, uh, it's not a good direction. You know, I think there's some good stuff within the policy, but the structure of how that will sit is, is, is not something that I think is going to be good. Thank you.
Finance director.
Mr. Chairman, right now, we're trying to handle the ARPA projects, which got sixty days left. It's not been handled appropriately. That's what brought this about, because there are several other projects that right now we're having issues that we're trying to put back together. So, if Mr. Wynn feels this is inappropriate and we don't need a policy, then in the morning, I may need to turn all those ARPA projects back over to the mayor. And he may need to finish these ARPA projects. Because right now, we don't have an extra employee. It's the one from the opioid. Me and my assistant are handling all the grant stuff and all the stuff that we've been handed. And we need some kind of process to handle these items. Right now, there's not a clear process. All I'm asking for is a clear process that makes sense, so I'm not trying to do anything inappropriate.
Commissioner Bullitt.
So, this policy first came to the efficiency committee. I presented it to them as we were talking about ways to make our process more efficient and streamlined. At our last meeting, I believe it was, we spent a lot of time talking because we didn't have a lot of the information. This, I, I like this policy. I like some guardrails. I always like guardrails. But here we've, we've been serving as a body for a long time, and I haven't seen a proper project management report yet. All, all, all we all wanted last time is we all went around this room because no one understood what we were voting on, what the numbers were, and where they came from. Everything is a firestorm because we don't know any information. So, anything would help, I believe, but I believe this is a good policy and it'll get us on the road to putting some guardrails and at least going down the road to getting information. The, the item of timeliness, I don't know. We, we, we've never gotten anything. I don't know how, how much timeliness we want, but something would be good. Some project management reports. I want to also tell you that today I went to the finance office, and I went to get a cup of coffee in that room. And I have to tell you, there were four big boxes that were piled full, and it said, "Old Courthouse Project Records." And it was just piles of records. And I was like, "Oh, the courthouse records." And then that, and then they're like, "No, they're more over here." So, in a back corner, there was piles of more boxes and stuff. I don't know how long it's going to be before they can tell us what the courthouse project even looked like, because there's piles and piles. So, I'm, I'm all for this proj, uh, for this policy, and I see nothing but a win in some directions.
Alright, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Klein, and hopefully that will be the last person before I ask Mr. Becker to take the podium, and I, I just want to make a comment here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm also in favor of this. I've been down this road, uh, quite a bit with Mr. Lawing, and, uh, I think it's safe to say I've got more construction experience than anybody on the commission. And standard operating procedure in the management of, of a project, our Gantt charts, financial statements, these are things that could be online all the time that anybody on the commission could go and, and look at. And my esteemed colleague from District Thirteen, who was on the general operations committee with me the first year that we were in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, should remember that we never got really anything satisfactory from the mayor when it came to projects underway. This is maybe not the perfect solution, but I think it's going to be really close, and I'm looking forward to having this system put in, in process so that we can have somebody who will understand what the progress is on a project, the financial aspects of the project, and we will be able to, on a monthly basis, ask questions on what's happening, and they will be totally timely in nature. Thank you.
I, I don't think there's anyone else in the queue.
I am, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say something. I've been waiting.
You want to go ahead, and then I will. Okay. I, I would just like to say that I don't think anybody will be a winner or a loser with this. Uh, I, I can see all sides of what's been said here. And having been a director of schools and a superintendent of schools, who was involved in millions and millions of dollars of, um, construction, I would, I would say to you that, uh, there, there's some things that have been said right and some things that, uh, have been said wrong, in my opinion. I think Mr. Wynn is correct, uh, pardon me, the commissioner here, I think is correct in, uh, stating that, um, our authority as a commissioner ends here. I wouldn't think about walking into any place and telling someone they should do this or that or whatever. However, I never worked, uh, as I've looked at this whole thing, starting out in opposition to this. I do favor it, and I will vote for it, because I, I know that the Board of Education, when I was director of schools and superintendent of schools, had final authority, and I had to report to them anything that was changed about a project or anything that we needed or didn't need or, or whatever. And, uh, so I, I just wanted to explain to you that I've been through this, and I know, but the Board of Education, they are a body that meets every two weeks, but they had the ultimate authority in, um, making a decision. And like I say, if you vote one way or the other, uh, we'll still be friends, I promise you. And you're not, you are not wrong, or you're not necessarily right, but I, I know what I have done and how it has worked, and, uh, I, I will be voting, uh, for this policy. Commissioner Mansfield.
Restate, Mr. Chairman, that, um, I, I disagree with the commissioner from the Twenty-third District a little bit at that, and, and agree somewhat with the commissioner from the Fifteenth District. This is not, um, a relief of duty of the county mayor of TCA five dash six dash one oh eight. It says, among other duties, it's the county mayor's duty to have care and custody of all county property except such as by law placed in custody of other officers. You know, and the finance director did read basically that the county building projects are under the oversight of the county legislative body. But that does not dismiss the fact or the, nobody is, with this policy, my interpretation of it is trying to be the day-to-day project manager or overseer of a weekly basis. That's the county mayor's job. The, the problem is, is the failure and the process, the process has been a failure because the county mayor has not provided that information. The previous quasi quote-unquote grant writer slash project manager did not give updates. There were failures in the process, the courthouse being the largest one of them. And, you know, the county mayor didn't come to general operations for five months. Um, and so, when, when you have meetings unnecessarily going to one o'clock in the morning for two building projects that nobody knew anything about and never came before committee, and all these questions can never be answered or gone through a process, it, it begs to different, you know, those questions come up. Uh, I'll give you a different scenario. The health department has not had these problems. Hal has done a great job of bringing this forward, in my opinion, for the most part, for, um, the, you know, the management, keeping the committee apprised, keeping the general operations committee apprised of what's happening. And, but he is actively involved in a project management role, but he's not the project manager. The company they hired to the commissioner from the Twenty-third District's point is, is the project manager for a project, and that is usually built into those projects and the smartest thing to happen, that then reports to the county mayor and also the, the committee, finance department, whatever. But, you know, it's just very important to understand the, the duty of roles. I don't see this as anything stepping on, uh, the duty of roles or saying the county mayor's not going to be overseeing these things, because I do believe that is his job to be a part of that process. I mean, that, that is what state law says. But, you know, it, it, state law does say specifically, and I know Sumter County has a hard time with that, because, you know, the election commission sued us over that, and the county mayor sued us over this, but the chancellor Oliver agreed with state law, is that the county commission has control and direction over property, where it's leasing it out, building it, getting rid of it. They're in giving department heads space. That's the county legislative body. It's not the county mayor. So, um, but when it comes to having care of those projects, I think it's essential for that county, the county mayor to have that involvement as the liaison. If, I, I see the county mayor role as a project manager role personally. I mean, that's kind of your day-to-day operation, oversee. Uh, but, I mean, the county mayor is more of a property manager, and the county commission is the property owner. It's a big difference, um, when you're dealing with property. So, I just wanted to clarify that and Alany Fears, but I appreciate this policy from the finance director, because it seems like it was, it's going to solve a lot of frustration points, and I'll bring transparency to the process, because there's been no transparency in this process for, ever since I've been up here. It's my seventh year. And so, I think we're going to cut down a lot of confusion with this. I do appreciate those involved in bringing it forward, um, and I, I hope we can pass this and finally get answers for the public and give the public plenty of leeway when we're spending millions of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, without debate or knowledge. Uh, I think it's the wrong thing to do. So, I will be supporting this, and I appreciate, um, you guys' support.
Okay.
I so move.
Okay. Well, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, we do. Already did.
Let's be careful that you're not, you almost talked me out of voting for this, so let's.
Okay.
Commissioner Teichner.
My only statement, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with much of what's been said tonight, but just to clarify, uh, what the commissioner from the Sixteenth District said. He said, uh, the county, the county commission or county legislative body is the owner. What, what's so important about finding that out is because that means the people are the owner. And so, we're actually working as representatives of the people. I just want to remind everybody that that's why it's important. It's not about one person taking ownership, and I know that everybody in here will probably agree with that. It's just very important that the people take back ownership of the county.
Commissioner Jones?
I call for a question.
Thank goodness. Okay, uh, you're the last one in the queue, so we've got it on the board. We won't need to go through that.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, we are voting on the main motion here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
The vote is fifteen to nine. Alright, let's move on.
Resolution twenty-four eleven dash fifteen. This was, the county mayor had gone to the city of Hendersonville requesting a waiver of the fees for the new health department building that we mentioned, and the mayor of Hendersonville sent back a request that the county commission approve this request from the county mayor. So, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the county mayor to officially request and go back for a waiver of fees from the city of Hendersonville for the health department. I so move.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, committee on committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is library board of trustees, Eric Stockton of Gallatin, for a three-year term. I so move.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Bergdorff?
I would like to nominate Paul McCoy for the library trustee.
That is Paul McCoy?
Yes, M-C-C-O-Y.
Alright, Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did want to make note for the public that there were forty-seven citizens who reached out via email, at least to me, and I saw, I think, most everybody by six P.M. today. Forty-seven citizens approving of and asking for us to approve Mr. Stockton to be on the library board. And there were only four people against his appointment. And, um, it is interesting. There are a lot of things, unfortunately, for those, somewhat just mean and somewhat defamatory comments against Mr. Stockton as a matter of public record in those emails, um, and I've seen other things. But of those forty-seven people who wanted Mr. Stockton on the board, four of those were pastors here in Sumter County. Uh, one, uh, person was a, a local children's author, wanted Mr. Stockton on the board. And I, I do want to, you know, if, things were mentioned regarding community values, and there's a quote that I emailed somebody back today from an old issue of the Sumter County News, and it's copied in a, it was called "A Short History of Sumter County" from seventeen eighty-six to nineteen fifty-seven. The state certainly, "There is no better gauge of a community's sense of values in both intellect and spirit than to gauge its library offers." And I found that kind of a pertinent statement when it comes to, heard citizens talking about values and community values. If you look at what is Sumter County's community values, I, I looked at voting records of those who submitted these emails today, and the forty-seven people who submitted wanted Mr. Stockton were, by all accounts, conservative Christian Republicans. And by all accounts, the four people who were against him were more progressive liberal Democrats. And so, this is a political issue. I hate to say it, we, we just went through a major election in the, the nation, that it was mentioned that when you're looking at values, the nation is rejecting, um, the insanity of what we've experienced in our culture and our departments nationwide and are coming back to more what are, or are our values as a community. And so, I, I appreciate, um, those who wrote in. I appreciate Mr. Stockton's value as a Christian conservative man, who, who has traditional family, family values, that think that's the values of Sumter County. Uh, we're not, um, New York, and we're not Los Angeles. So, I, I don't see any reason why not to put forward, uh, Mr. Stockton. I appreciate, uh, his stance, but I just wanted to make that note for the record. Forty-seven to four is a pretty resounding statement from the citizens, speaking out of what they would like to see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would just like to, uh, so we have another name mentioned, but we've, Mr. Stockton has been, I have comments on this, which I'll hold them for later, but, uh, ultimately, Mr. Stockton has been vetted by the Committee on Committees. We have another name, but we don't know anything about this individual. Could, we hear some notes on a resume, something, I mean, or is it just a name? That would maybe be directed to my colleague.
That would be entirely up to someone who would like to stand and give some kind of, uh, are you standing to do that? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I have spoken, um, broadly with Mr. McCoy. He is a very supportive of our, of our public libraries and of literacy. He works for the Southern Festival of Books, and, um, I find he's well-qualified to be in this position based on his demeanor. I think the board, the, the trustees, the library board is quite rankrous at this point. I think the board, the, the trustees, the library board is quite rankrous at this point, and I feel like it would be in good form to have Mr. McCoy be part of this board to give some coolant to the air.
I'd like to be in queue as well, too, Mr. H-
Pardon?
I'd like to be in queue as well.
Okay. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of clarification, so we don't get down to the vote and be a little bit confused, I'm taking it from the commissioner from the 19th district that this is a nomination. We would be voting between the two, not an additional nominee, correct? Thank you.
Commissioner Becker?
That was my exact same question, so thanks.
Commissioner Boyt?
Whoops, there, sorry. It took me a minute to remember. Mr. McCoy came to our library, our Gallatin Library parking lot ad hoc. I know y'all are all excited about that ad hoc. But, uh, he was there and he, we had a fabulous ad hoc and a lot of, there were three citizens that had a lot to contribute. And afterwards, I talked to all of them, because I'm a good politician. And Mr. McCoy has actually been helping the Friends of Gallatin with their grants, and he has obtained like, I think it was over fifty thousand dollars at our Gallatin Library branch through the Friends in helping them write grants. So, I was asking him if he had been involved in some of our other grant writing, because grants are such a big hot topic with us for the last two years. I did have an in-depth conversation with him. So, I did, I, I liked his involvement that day, and I'm, I think I'm going to vote for him.
Commissioner Miller?
We talk a lot about transparency, and a couple speakers spoke on, you know, the process and submitting resumes and who's on the list for choices. And I've never heard this gentleman's name before today. It did not become before the committee. That is not transparent. And coming from a commissioner that has abstained for the last several votes, I think it's asinine. It's all that.
All right, Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, again, I, I feel like it's important to understand the context, having seen some of the, the rancor and acknowledged that some of that has occurred. I think it's important to just understand why we've gotten where we are. So, eighteen months ago or so, I forget the exact date, we had a, an individual, Mr. Kirk Cameron, who came to the Hendersonville Library, and this individual was almost denied the right to read books. And I, I found that to be an egregious violation of someone's First Amendment rights. So, the truth of the matter is that libraries have become a, a battleground for, for various interests to kind of, to, to make a point and test each other. So, we, we, with the library board and ultimately acting on behalf of the, the commission, took pretty strong action by removing the library director for their actions, their choices to not, to initially not let Mr. Cameron speak. And Mr. Cameron was allowed to speak, so, and, and I support that. I, I do think, I, I, I know some of the individual who has been appointed, and this is a highly intelligent and qualified person, I, I would argue that, I think I disagree with my colleague to my left here slightly about the, the lessons to take away from the national election. Yes, the, the nation did speak, but I would argue that the nation has spoken. Instead, the primary complaint against the, the political left has been its overbearing and desire to stifle speech and to, to dictate how others act. So, I am, while I radically want to fight against that, I also want to make sure that we don't do the same thing. That's what gives me a little bit of pause here. I, I definitely think that, that the individual who's been nominated is qualified, but I, the First Amendment is, is a sacred thing. I want to note that many of the, that I've, that I've been taking something of a hard stance when it has come to school libraries, because school libraries are specific for children. However, I think the bar is different when it comes to public libraries, that public libraries have a wider berth for what they can and should allow. I, I acknowledge that, that various interests do use the library to exploit our First Amendment in order to, to push particular agendas. However, the First Amendment is, is cherished. So, I have, I have various thoughts on this vote. I'm not a hundred percent sure how I'm going to, how I'm going to vote on it, but I would hope that the lesson that we take from the elections and the lesson that we take as this body, and I'll tell you, my personal governing philosophy is this, leave people alone, so not, not to dictate to others. And that is probably how I'm going to, I'm going to try to hopefully let that principle guide my, guide my hand tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find it interesting that a nation, it was not, our nation was not founded by all Christians, but it's founded on Christian principles. And those Christian principle followers wrote our constitution. And somehow, our First Amendment rights that were meant to protect the Christ follower winds up being used egregiously against the follower of Jesus. It aggravates me, and I don't know why that has become such a battleground, but I've spoken to Mr. Stockton. We've talked about Jesus quite a bit, and that's the reason I want to vote for him. I've not spoken to the other gentleman, and so I make an amendment that we send him through the proper process, send him to Committee on Committees and let them vet him, and let them do the job that we as a commission voted, including myself, that voted myself off Committee on Committees. Completely fine with, it's the will of people, but we need to support the Committee on Committees that we voted for. Take the process and vote on it, and I believe that we should vote for someone who has Christian principles in their heart, and I think there's nothing wrong with it in the world. Thank the Lord.
All right, there's been a motion, is this an amendment? I'll, I'll ask the attorney, are we on the right path here if we take a vote on this?
My understanding is, is that it would be referring this individual back to Committee on Committees, and the only person before the body would be the person who's named on the agenda.
So, is that what you're asking to do, to send Mr. McCoy back to committee, and we would be voting on this other person?
I'm not saying at all, Mr. Chairman, that we don't need to consider him, but I think we can't consider him until he goes through our process.
Is that what you're wanting to do?
So, send Mr. McCoy to Committee on Committees, send Mr. Stockman, Mr. Stockman, Mr. Stockton to us to vote right now, as is.
All right, so the amendment is whether we will send Mr. McCoy's name back to committee. All right. Anyone speaking to that? Would you please just stand? All right. Commissioner Lambeth, we haven't heard from you.
I try not to speak. So, the, that name sounded familiar a little bit, and then when Commissioner Boyt mentioned the grant writer, it, it rang a bell. So, I did a search in my county email and found on November the seventh, twenty twenty-three, at ten forty-nine A.M., we got an email from Paul McCoy with a resume attached implementing and asking to be considered for the library board. So, it's a little concerning to me that two of the members of the, at that time, Committee on Committees either don't remember or apparently never spoke to him at that time. So, I would say he has been through the committee or should have been through the committee process, and sounds like was not given his fair shot, which I find super concerning. But from what I can see, has a stellar resume and it sounds like would be a great addition to our library board.
All right. Commissioner Nguyen, is this on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right. On the amendment?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we hear a lot about the process, the process, the process. So, I, I'm just going to ask the glaringly obvious question, can we please explain the process? Because we've got citizens saying that they don't understand the process. I couldn't tell you what the process is. You watch the committee meetings and they haven't changed much over time to where a name is magically pulled out of a hat and just, that's the only name discussed, if it is even discussed at all before it's voted on and pushed to our body. So, I don't think that the process is as transparent as one would want it to be or one that tries to play it out to be. Uh, also, I don't see how Mr. McCoy, going back through this process that we currently have that's so transparent, is going to benefit anything other than delaying a vote tonight. So, that, that's my concern there. I, I'm not going to support sending him back to the committee. I appreciate the Commissioner Lambeth in, in, you know, providing the information about this guy's already submitted a resume, expressed interest, and the committee has failed to contact or do anything with it. This is the, I think, the first time that I'm hearing of the name, but I too have looked over. He looks like a great individual to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I will remind the commissioners who want to speak to this to keep it narrow. This is on the amendment. Commissioner Mansfield, is this on the amendment?
This is on the amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Harrison, is this on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize. Commissioner Jones was flipped up before I noticed it to speak, and so he is next. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My, my microphone turned red, so I stood up, sorry. So, I don't want to vote no to Mr. McCoy, because I don't know him. I've not heard anything about him. I have spoken to Mr. Stockton. I know his morals, I know his values, and I'm prepared to vote on him. And left with a choice between two people that I've, one I've never talked to and, and one I have, that's just not fair to Mr. McCoy. I would encourage him to go speak in public comments during Committee on Committees, so that he'll be heard out, and I'm, I'm encouraging the, the Committee on Committees to hear him out, come, come with a recommendation. But I heard a lot about his resume and, and maybe his background with grants and things like that, but what I don't know is his moral or ethical beliefs at all. And since, as my fellow commissioner pointed out, that the libraries are battleground in this nation right now for, for our community belief system, to, to show what our community believes, and they're supposed to reflect what our community believes, I, I want to vote for somebody that I align with and that I believe my constituents align with. So, like I said, I can vote for one of them. I don't want to say no to the other one. Possibly, he may be another one that comes up at the next slot. I want to hear him out, but not prepared to vote on Mr. McCoy tonight.
Commissioner Harrison? I, I had asked Mr. Mansfield, and he's on the main motion. Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, Commissioner Bergdorff's mention of Mr. McCoy's name was actually a nomination, so we're amending the motion to approve Mr. Stockton.
What emotion is?
I, I guess I'm a little confused, because hers was a nomination, is my understanding. It wasn't like a, a motion personally.
The motion is to send McCoy's name to the committee, and we'll be voting tonight on Mr. Stockton.
Okay. It, it just sounded to me like we were amending the nomination, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were doing.
All right. Commissioner Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when someone has sent me an email or has contacted me by phone about this and the concern, and y'all have to forgive me for this, maybe I'm guilty of this, but I don't, the prerequisite, if you're a citizen and have a concern with me, is not where you lean politically. I just want to hear from you, just exchange ideas and see where your mind is at. So, I've had several in my district, because I'd get out and talk to people that are concerned with, that some resumes are not being looked at, they're being not considered. So, I went back this year from January up till October, and I'm not going to go through every one of these for the sake of time, but the average meeting minutes for the Committee on Committees was eighteen minutes long, which is concerning me. And I'm not accusing them of not doing what they're supposed to do, that's not why I'm saying that, but it concerns me that the average meeting is eighteen minutes long, where there are several here that were two nominees on old business, here four on old business, one was to group and approve at one time, one was to group and approve another time, but I have resumes that I'm, you know, we're all getting, I'm assuming, that they just don't know why. And, you know, so I look back at these meetings and to try to get some answers for these citizens and their concerns to see if that resume is mentioned on any of these meetings, and I don't see it. So, you know, maybe I'm missing something. Like I say, I'm not accusing Committee on Committees of doing anything wrong, but to me, for me to make a decision on anything of this nature, when the average meeting is eighteen minutes, I, I would like just to see us send back Mr. McCoy to Committee on Committees so they can discuss it and have that. But I'd also like to just defer tonight's nomination of Mr. Stockton as well. And the other thing that concerned me too, Mr. Chairman, forgive me, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I did listen to the meeting and you said some good, you said some stuff that I agree with that, and I'm not one of the commissioners that contacted you, but I believe, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, that there was, I believe, two commissioners that contacted you over the process, how, and how Committee on Committees is working. And again, I don't know who those two individuals are, but that gave me pause that night when I was playing back the video to say, you know what, maybe we perhaps need to consider an ad hoc committee, get all these things out in the open, have a citizen or two sit on the committee, let them share and see where it goes. I can just tell you this real quick, I don't know the exact month, but I did, and I was public about this, I did visit the Hendersonville Public Library, went around with the director there. I didn't see any red flags as far as them promoting anything bad, you know? We've heard that, I mean... No, I'm just, I'm just wrapping up with that, just to say, just to be fair that...
Let's allow him a few minute, a few seconds to...
Yeah, just to be fair, I personally, all I'm getting at is there's these things that we got to protect these kids from things, and I'm all for that, but all I'm saying is, when I went to visit that library, I didn't see anything nefarious. I mean, if there was, I didn't see it. It, it seemed like a very nurturing environment. I've brought my kids there for years, my kids have seen, have never been exposed one way or the other to any kind of political thing.
So, I think your motion is to just send this whole thing back with both candidates to the...
Send it back to both candidates.
Pardon? I'm not understanding what you're saying or what you're meaning. It's two amendments. Not, not two motions, there's only one motion. So, your amendment is to send them both back?
I, I would like to also see, maybe give the Committee on Committees an opportunity to, and people are listening to this publicly, if you're listening to this and you have submitted a resume and you felt like it has not been considered, I would like that as well to be brought forth that night. And let's just have it out in the open, if they don't qualify, just let them know, look, this is why we're not picking.
And I think I heard a second here. Commissioner Pomeroy, yes. All right, so we're going to, to vote on this amendment. Is there any discussion of this amendment, please? All right, Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, I went back and looked. Mr. McCoy was actually one of the self-appointed perpetuating library board... Mr. McCoy was actually one of the self-appointed perpetuating library board appointments in 2022 when we came on and you, you had mentioned to us that you didn't like boards that were self-perpetuating and that, uh, which is what the library board was doing, is appointing their own members. And, uh, the county commission was just kinda rubber stamping it. And so we brought that process back to the Committee on Committees because it's the commissioner's job to do it. So Mr. McCoy was submitted originally, uh, in that process in 2022. Um, and, uh, also, his name was also on a list that I was asked to provide, uh, as all those who had inquired that I could find. I think there was like thirty-something names total last spring, so this body has seen his name before. If you didn't pay attention, I mean, uh, can't, I can't help that. Uh, but that was provided as asked. I, I, I will, it, as far as, when I was on the committee, people who were wanting to be on or, or we put forward, uh, they came to the meetings, uh, they were there to answer questions. They, most of them spoke. Uh, they all submitted resumes that were in the packet, full transparency for those, uh, that we put forward. But what, basically, what, what we're hearing here is, is I'm not getting my way, therefore you're not being transparent. Which is not how it works. I mean, it's, I mean, this is a political appointment. We're a political body. And I, I sat here for my first four years and didn't cry or spill milk because I didn't get my way because somebody didn't get appointed because, you know, I was on the losing end of every stick. But that's just how it was, you know? That's, that's the nature of the beast. So, but what I hear is because somebody's not getting their way, um, therefore, um, you're doing something nefarious or, or not transparent, uh, which is just bogus. And, um, the citizens are tired of hearing that because this is a political appointment. We might as well then do it ad hoc for, uh, the county mayor's appointment pro- progress, process, uh, process for the Planning Commission or any boards that the county mayor does because we want full transparency there. And let's have an ad hoc committee with citizens and let's get everybody involved and see what the county mayor does. And so it's just, gets a little ridiculous here. So you put a name forward. Every commissioner has a right to put a name forward from the floor. It's great. Do it. That's what we happened, happened tonight. If the body wants to vote for that, they can vote it up or down. They can send it back to committee, uh, to have this individual come before the committee, uh, which is totally within the purview of the process. Uh, but, you know, I just have to disagree with some of the, the statements that have been made. I just think it's kinda weird. And nobody had these problems with my first four years on the commission with, uh, how the previous Committee on Committee Chairman, Mr. Goode, did it. Uh, and Mr. Becker, I think you were on it for five, four years as well. And I don't remember any complaints about the transparence in the process. Um, so I should, I just find it kind of hypocritical, the double mind...
Well, let's narrow this down.
That's fine. I just wanted to make those, those comments clear, but this, this name's come forward before, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Ring, is this on Amendment Two?
It's on Amendment One.
Um, Commissioner Sho, what is yours on?
Mine is, I was gonna make an amendment, but it would be on Amendment One, so...
Uh, Commissioner Becker, what is yours on?
It's probably on a little bit of both. Um...
Probably, probably on what?
On, on this one. It could probably, it ties into it. So I looked at, at Mr. McCoy's resume as well. And, um, to my knowledge, and, and I, I did have a sidebar, that he's actually never been on the library board. So I'm not where, I'm not sure where the misinformation came from that the previous speaker spoke of, so, um... But no, I, I, I'm not in favor of, of moving either one of these back. I'm in favor of voting on both tonight, either or.
All right, Commissioner Teasner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I was gonna ask how many positions are open?
You were going to ask what?
How many positions are open?
Uh, I think, uh, five are, we haven't filled this one. There are three?
Three, okay.
Wait a moment, wait a moment. Do we have eleven members on the library board? So how many?
Three. There are three open positions. Three open positions.
Three, uh, three open position?
Three, yes.
So there are presently eight members?
Eight, presently eight, yes.
Uh, our representative on the board has spoken, so I'm, uh, accepting what she's saying. So three are...
Okay, so, thank you, sir. I just wanted to clarify to make sure I wasn't miscounting.
All right.
So the, the thing I, I wanna say on the, on the deferment, uh, suggestion is we have three open positions. We have one vetted, one unvetted. The one who is vetted and has come through the proper procedure is a, is a Christian, father, husband, patriot, educated, lover of Sumner County. And he reads, who do you wanna vote for? He's been vetted. Let's do this thing.
Uh, Commissioner Sho?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm on the, uh, I'm just trying to stay in queue for the previous one.
I was just gonna clarify. I didn't say that, that Mr. McCoy has been on the library board. That's not what I said. I said he was part of the application process that was submitted to County Commission in 2022 that the library board self-perpetuated and put his name forward as part of that process. Thank you.
Commissioner Pomeroy?
Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick, parliamentary inquiry. What is our motion? Is it to refer or defer?
All right.
I mean, we're forty-five minutes in. I'm guessing that...
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the parliamentary situation is there have been two nominations, uh, to the library board. There's been a motion to refer to committee for Paul McCoy. And then there was amendment to that motion to refer the whole thing back to committee. That's my understanding of the situation.
Wait, are you saying refer?
Refer. It's not, it's not defer. It's not been there. It's referring it to committee.
So refer is non-debatable. Is that correct?
It is debatable as long as you talk about the referral merits of that.
So which one is it that goes back to committee where you stop debating at that time?
I think that's to defer, but I'm not a hundred percent certain. I'm not sure.
All right, uh, Commissioner, there's no one else in the queue, so we're gonna vote on this to send, uh, both back to the, uh, committee. All right, uh, you'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Vote is twenty to four to not send that back, so we're on Amendment Number One now. Commissioner Sho, or is this to Amendment One?
It is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm just, man, sometimes I gotta get down to brass tacks. It's not about process. We got, this is what this is for, right? I mean, this is not a bad thing. It's about ideas. Some people want Person A, some people want Person B. We got three open slots. I move to, uh, appoint both. That's my motion.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to appoint both to the, uh, men, an amendment to appoint both to the, um, to the board. Is there a second? Commissioner Wright, all right. A motion of second. Uh, Commissioner Ring, is this on that? All right, Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with doing it this way. I think might be more efficient is just we just, we just vote one up and, up or down, then we vote the other up or down instead of grouping and approving.
All right, uh, there's no one else in the queue, so we're gonna place this on the board.
For which, what is it? For both?
For both, yes or no? Yes, for both, no? For both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, place both on the library board. Uh, Commissioner...
Each commissioner, record your vote.
The vote is eleven to twelve with one abstaining, so that fails. We're back on the motion one. Uh, is this, uh, what you wanna speak to, Commissioner Ring?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, Amendment One.
Correct. We have had lots and lots of times when the Committee on Committees has made a recommendation and we have had somebody make a sec, uh, substitute, uh, motion and we voted on it. We haven't, we don't send it back. We vote on it. So this, as far as I'm concerned, this is not, this is not a precedent we wanna start or we, where we do that. This is a, this is a substitute motion to substitute Mr. McCoy's name in place of Mr. Stockton's name on the, on the library board. So I don't see what's, what's the purpose in sending it back. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Pomeroy?
I don't know what I'm talking about right now. Uh, so we're now back on...
Amendment One.
Amendment One, which is just to vote for either Mr. McCoy or Mr. Stockton?
No, that's the main motion.
That's the main, okay.
It's to send Mr. McCoy back to committee and vote on Mr. Stockton.
Okay, I'd like, I'm gonna vote no to that, so...
All right, you don't have to tell us, but... All right, Commissioner Becker? Commissioner Becker?
I'd like to make an amendment to do what I just suggested a second ago. We put both of them up separately. We have, because there's three spots. We'll put Mr. Stockton up for a vote, yes or no? Separately, Mr. McCoy up for a vote, yes or no?
So we have enough positions that they both could be accepted if they're voted that way? All right, uh, is there a second? And there's a second from, uh, Mr. Sho. Seeing no one in the queue, we'll vote on that. Yes or no?
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Which is four?
All right, wait just a moment. Vote is nineteen to five, so we will now be placing, uh, did you, as I understood it, it was a one name at a time. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will place Mr. Stockton on the board for a positive or negative vote. Then we'll place Mr. McCoy on the vote, on the board with a positive or negative vote. And we could end up with one or two, or possibly none elected here tonight. Okay, so first of all, Mr. Stockton, who was recommended by the committee. You'll place that on the board. Green is affirming him. Red is no.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
There are thirteen negative votes, ten yes votes, one abstention. And now we will place Mr. McCoy's name on the board.
Which one? What's the positive vote for him?
Well, it'd be yes, affirming, no.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Mr. McCoy receives fifteen affirmative votes and is elected to the library board. All right, Mr., uh, I'm Ms. Miller, if you will. Commissioner Miller, proceed.
Item number two is Airport Authority Samuel Solaronzo, gallatin a three-year term. I so move.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Harris?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd like to nominate Josh Brinson to the Airport Authority.
Uh, could you spell that for us?
B R I, B R I N S O N. Is that correct?
All right, Commissioner, uh, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor to, and accepting, accepting this as a nomination?
No, no, no.
Huh? No vote, all right. We will not go. I will accept the attorney's opinion on that, not yours. And we will not vote on this, so, um, Commissioner Sho?
Uh, same, same question that I had, uh, well, I've got two questions. One is, uh, same as I had before for Mr. McCoy. Can we get an overview of, of Mr. Brinson, um, and his qualifications? And second, uh, how many, I'd, I'd be interested in how many open seats there are on the Airport Authority? If we know that answer.
All right, I will ask, uh, the Committee on Committees, how many openings are there on the...
I'm pretty sure it's just one.
Just one? I, is someone in this position? I know that'll be asked, and we may as well...
I think that term is up. I would have to go back and double check. I'm not positive.
Is this Mr. Shepherd's position?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. High, or Commissioner High.
I'm seeing two. Two?
Commissioner Junon says there's two.
Two open positions?
Is, is this particular one, uh, someone who is serving now on the...
Uh, I don't know, Mr. High. I'm not sure. I don't have it in front of me.
That would be some critical information for one, I'm sure.
Miss, Miss Chairman, I, I would, uh, like to move to suspend the rules and, and allow, uh, Mr. Brinson to give his, uh, give himself his resume.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye? Those like some?
No.
Uh, I think the noes have it unless someone will... Pardon? What is your point? What is the point?
So this process is in Committee on Committees and per our rules, we have sixteen votes to discharge...
It's not the process. What's the parliamentary point?
We're breaking our own rules, our own standing rules, with taking something out of committee without sixteen votes to do so. We're nominating people from the floor without going through Committee on Committees.
No, that's not what we're talking about. All right, a division on the vote. Place it on the board.
Green is to allow him to speak, is that correct?
Yes.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Yes has fifteen votes. So your, your motion, that, uh, is to allow him to speak?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd just like to, uh, we have, uh, we have a reason to...
It was yes for him to speak?
Good evening. I'll try to make it, sorry.
Wait just a moment, um... Explain, and then I'll make a ruling.
Uh, the motion to suspend the rules requires two-thirds vote. It received fifteen votes.
Uh, I would agree with that, so I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, I move to approve both members. That's my motion.
Motion to approve both members? Uh, wait, this will be an amendment to, uh, approve both members. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, is this to that motion, uh, amendment? Uh, Ms. Junon?
Is there a second?
I have a comment about the process from the Airport Authority. Is that okay? Will you speak to that? Uh, I don't know how many of you...
Oh, it's on. Sorry, okay. You're good. I'd like to, my question is, can I speak to the process of appointing someone to the Airport Authority?
That, that's not this amendment, no.
So the, what's, the amendment is to allow both to be appointed? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't get a second.
Is there a second? All right, well, that's dead. Um, we're back on the motion.
So, again, you know, one of the commissioners said, you know, the average time for the committee is eighteen minutes. Well, the Education Committee, the last one they had, not this one, the one before was like maybe thirteen minutes. I don't, you know, when you do an interview process and when you talk to people, you know, you don't dump all this stuff on a desk and, and, because we did this at the, uh, uh, Resource Center about hiring somebody and, and bringing people in and bringing resumes in. I don't know, I don't know any, I don't even know... I don't know, I don't know any, I don't even know who this person is, but I want to tell you, there are requirements for that board. And I'd like to know how many of you under, realize or know what those requirements are. Do you know? So, you don't know what you're voting for. So, if you're gonna vote for somebody, you need to know what the requirements are for the board. Bringing someone's name, I, he couldn't even spell the guy's name, so, I mean... I'm just saying that this is, the process for committee on committee is to look at the people's information and put them in as a request. We've had lots of requests, we've had lots of people come before this committee on, you know, recommendations. We're starting to throw people in here that are never, not vetted, there's, we had a citizen tonight talk about the fact that people have applied, and there's no transparency, what's the process? So, is the process to have committee on committee look at people's resumes and make a recommendation? Or is it to just throw it in the air and bring people to the front because it's, for whatever reason? We don't, we, we gotta, you know, we need to have a, the plan is getting out of hand here. And when you're gonna vote for somebody on the Airport Authority, or any board actually, you really should understand what you're voting for. And so, my, my problem here is that we're adding people to boards that we haven't even seen a resume, we're not gonna hear from him because we can't vote about that, or we voted and it went away. What are we doing? What are we doing here? To me, this, this whole thing, the Library Board, the Airport Authority, all these board appointments have become such a political mess and a political problem for this commission in this discourse between everybody in here about, I want my person and I want this person. Hey, I'm fine if you go through the process and you're, you're vetted and you're good. I'm fine with that. But this crap about bringing anybody you want up here without anybody being vetted, no resumes in, in your, in your packet, has gotta stop. I mean, we need to grow up. Let's grow up here, be adults, and say, hey, we got a process, we got a committee, we do what we do, because pretty soon, you're gonna start bypassing your Education Committees, your General Ops, you're gonna wanna do this, you're gonna wanna do that, and there is no rhyme or reason to what we do. And it's becoming a joke. So, I, I suggest that you all realize, understand what you're voting for on the Airport Authority, what the requirements are, what the board needs, and then decide what you want. Because I know what they need, and I know what the board requires. But I don't think a lot of you do. And that's all I got to say, and, because this is ticking me off.
Okay. I'm ticked off too. But, we have to remember, from thirty-three years up here, thirteen votes can do anything. Whether we like it or not. It may tick us off, we may not like it, we may not agree with it, we may wanna go home. And there've been many nights I've wanted to just go home, you know? But look, thirteen votes can decide whatever they wanna do. They can bypass any committee, they can do what, they can sell this building, they can do whatever they want to. Okay, all right, let's get back to the subject, which by this time, I don't even know what the subject was, but, uh, the frustration with this is that there is a lot of disharmony on this commission. It has never been like this before. Never. It's never been like this before. People could go off, out for coffee after a commission meeting, and be friends, and talk about things, and, uh, come back the next meeting and go at it again. What we need to do is quit all the talking. I literally, literally sit up here sometimes and am talked out of where I would normally vote. We need to shut up and just realize that we have, we have our own minds that we can think with. And talking for fifteen minutes is not gonna change my mind. Okay, let's get back to where we were, I think it was on the main motion, was it not? Or did we dispose of the amendment? The amendment didn't go anywhere, so we're back on the main motion of electing this person or not. Commissioner Schmidt, is this on the main?
It is, a quick question, but really, real fast, I will say, um, your, our Education Committee meeting lasted maybe four or five minutes, because I don't know how you interview a copy machine, it's pretty cut and dry, we're not... Okay, well, question for you, though, we got that out of the way. Mr. Shepherd's got thirty years' experience as a pilot, is he not wanting this position? Because I, I had heard that during the last Committee on Committee meeting, I think that was a concern of yours too, that if he's not broke, don't fix it.
I am not sure at this point if this is actually Mr. Shepherd's position or not, and I'm being told it's not, that this is not Mr. Shepherd's position.
So, it's not Mr. Shepherd?
If it will clarify. Okay. Yep.
Sorry about that.
All right, Ms. Templeton has turned you on.
Appreciate it. Well, you didn't have me turned on. I'm glad we can still laugh, though. The chairman of the Airport Authority is here, he could probably answer that question better than anybody here, if y'all would allow him to speak.
Motion to suspend the rules, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
I'm calling for a division of the House because I can determine. All right. Yes will be affirming that motion that we have him explain, no, uh, he will not be able to speak. You have voted to, uh, well, is this a suspension rule? All right, it received fifteen votes, but not sixteen, so, he will not speak. Okay? All right, I have a list of people here already that I need to ask if this is on the motion, and if you still wanna speak, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Becker, is this, did you still wanna speak?
I was next in the queue, and I haven't spoken to this at all.
Did you move him up to the queue? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Samuel Solerzano was, has been on, he's, he was put forth last December, and ironically enough, Mr. Harris's name was added from the floor last December, to nobody's knowledge, nobody's anything, and not through the committee process, and he was voted in, in, in the stead of Mr. Solerzano. So, Mr. Solerzano has been through the process, he's come to the committee, he's spoken, I think he's been there at least twice, to my knowledge. He is a, um, his, his background is, is a military pilot and a commercial airline pilot. He's been a Southwest Airlines pilot for sixteen years, uh, as well, so, I don't think you're gonna have anybody, you're talking about qualifications for a specific role, for a specific board, if you're talking about airlines and airports, uh, that Mr. Solerzano would be an excellent addition to this. I don't know why this is even a debate or a question, honestly, at this point. But, I, I will note that, uh, this is the second time this has happened to him, to have his nomination with a surprise vote from the floor, and I probably won't be surprised what's gonna happen tonight, um, based on past transparency. So, but I just wanted to point that out, that he, his qualifications have been in the packet, he's been up for literally a year on this process. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes, thank you. Are we, I've got, I got a few questions. Are we one hundred percent certain there are two openings? Because I've heard members of the Committee on Committees think there was only one opening. And I've heard other people say there's two openings, and we can easily answer, but for some reason, we don't want to know the truth, because we won't, we can't get the sixteen person to say yes, to just ask a simple question. You know, talking about something that's inefficient, we, you know, everyone's just guessing, I mean, I, I wanna know, is it one hundred percent? We can easily get that answer, but no one, you know, I guess we just don't wanna do that. And if it's not Steve Shepherd's, I, I pulled up the Committee on Committees' agenda from last month, because I didn't see one for this month. I think it got canceled. But Mr. Solerzano, he's on the line with Steve Shepherd, and, and I hadn't, I didn't get a chance to watch the meeting, I guess, but, so, is it not Steve Shepherd's? Is there one opening, two openings? Is Dennis Cavan, is he still, like, what's, what's up with that opening? Who's this Paul Williams Senior, like, I don't, looking right here, I don't know, I don't understand why... It looks like there's two openings, but it's not Steve Shepherd's opening, so is this Dennis Cavan's opening?
Yes.
It's my understanding that there are two openings, and that Mr. Shepherd's will be next month, is what I was told at one point.
Okay, so it's swapped from the agenda, which, which is fine.
Uh, I'll refer, for clarity, I'll ask, uh, our Chair, Chairman to respond as to, whose position is this?
It is Mr. Cavan's position that is up for Mr. Solerzano. And Mr. Williams was on the agenda, but he has to be taken off because, um, for personal reasons.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. So, I wanna, I don't, I don't know where we're at on this motion or whatnot, but I'll make an amendment to do the exact same thing we did a second ago, where we, we put Mr. Soler, Solerzano's name up, yes or no? And then we put Mr. Brinson's name up, yes or no? I mean, Mr. Brinson has it, I mean, extremely qualified, extremely qualified, but we won't let him come up here and talk, so, but that's my amendment, is to vote, vote him up or down.
All right, the amendment has been made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
No.
Let's have a division of the House. This is a majority vote.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, with sixteen votes, that's what we'll do. You have voted to do that. So, we'll do as we did before, with green being affirmative, red being a negative, a negative vote. And we will go first with... With this, should we be discussing? All right, go ahead.
Ms. Chairman, uh, as chairman of the commission, I'm just gonna ask you, why do we have a committee on? It's directly for this.
I'm not gonna answer, but go ahead and ask me.
Okay, why do we have a committee on committees? I'll let the audience fill that in. And I'm gonna ask you also, are you serving on committee on committees? Answer's yes. The next question is, it has everything to do with it?
Wait just a moment, I, I don't think it's necessary, but go ahead and finish as quickly as possible.
Okay. My question is, with you being chairman of the commission, and you being on the Committee on Committees and knowing the purpose for it, and we voted on it as a body, I wanna know why, I wanna know your position, why that you don't support your own committee, that you are on that process, I just wanna ask that, because this, this'll change things going forward, because it seems like we're gonna have daily, nightly, all the time, every few minutes, uh, nominations from the floor that are not vetted.
I think you're right about that, but I'm not going to comment, and we'll move on. Okay. The, granted, we will vote on, uh, Commissioner Pomeroy?
I was in the queue before someone jumped up, I'm, I thought we voted and we're ready to vote, I was in the queue for that. I, I think that, that's a problem with certain people, that happen just when you wanna speak, you raise your hand. I can speak. Off topic. I will say this, though, now that I'm in there, I've been here for a long time, quite, about two years ago, I sat here and people were, and the audience laughed at it, because I said, this is gonna be a comical, comical thing, as soon as there's a little crack in the armor, because when it's about power and about control, nothing gets done. Nothing gets done. And everybody shook their head, and all this and that, and I said a little comment about, oh, when, when the band's together, it's like Christmas, everybody's gonna buy all their toys, but as soon as they break up, y'all look what's gonna happen. And here we go, we can't even figure out how to vote on anything. So, just, since we're all talking and saying our opinion, I don't know what, Mr. Chairman is, I would say this. We are going to vote now on a motion, I'm assuming to vote for both of them, we already agreed to do that. We voted for that, and that was his motion, it was second, and we were voted. I shouldn't even be speaking right now, the commissioner who jumped up in front of me shouldn't have even been speaking right now, at that point. We were already ready to vote. That's one reason why we're here for it.
All right, let, let's go ahead and vote then.
So, that's your job to take care of that.
Let's go ahead and vote, and then we won't have to, uh, worry about that. All right, uh, the green will be whom? Okay, all right, so, first will be, um, Mr.? Who do you want first? Solerzano will be the first one, so, you will enter a, a yes or a no vote.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
You didn't vote.
I did vote. Evidently, did not, uh, I, I meant to abstain on this, but I will vote yes. Now, was the intent of that motion, Mr. Becker, to fill the other position?
Yes.
Oh, yes or no? Oh, just like the other?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, and now we're voting on Mr.? So, we will... The vote, just a moment, the vote right now, we, we passed this, so we're gonna live by it, was to vote on each of these candidates. If you wanna save your vote for Mr. Shepherd, the appropriate thing would be to vote no. But, this will be for the gentleman that's been nominated. All right? So, place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
So it appears that we have voted to add this person also to the airport board. All right, go ahead, Chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, do you say if we voted for both of those?
Yes, yes. Okay, well, that still is 13 to 10, so, okay, all right.
Oh, it'd be 12 votes if they voted no on the first one.
Are you saying on the first one? Uh, the votes? Just a moment, please, just a moment. You're wanting to change your vote on the first, can he do that?
Yes, until the end of the meeting.
Okay, until the end of the meeting, so he can do that. So is there an opening on the, what was the vote on the first one? 13 to 11, so there is no election on the first one, then. What's your point? What's your point?
I'm asking the question, the process we laid out.
That's not a point of order, to ask a question.
No, some of the votes can be contingent upon how the other one turned out. And then to see how one turned out and then switch it.
No, that's not a point of order. All right, go ahead.
Item number three, Tourism Board, Eric Janicki, Gallatin, three-year term, I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
All right.
Looking at, when was, when was Mr. Janicki's name brought before the Committee on Committees?
I'm sorry.
When was Mr. Janicki's?
How are you directing that to Mr. Hod?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, when was Mr. Janicki's name brought before the Committee on Committees? They did not have a November meeting, and he's not on the October agenda.
I, I, I'm sure that after the three-hour highway meeting, that's not, I mean, he waited for the three-hour highway committee to finish, so he could speak at committee.
I have no issue with Mr. Janicki, I'm just asking when it, when it was brought before the Committee on Committees, because we have, we have discussed, things need to go before the Committee.
He may actually, Commissioner, he may actually, whether he was brought before or not, and the appropriate thing would be to be brought before the Committee, but whether he was or not, if, if, if his name is presented and voted upon, he, that's, that can be done.
But if he wasn't before the, if he hasn't been before the Committee on Committees, then he can't be a Committee on Committee Recommendation, can he?
He just voted for somebody that had never been.
I realize that, but I'm just saying that this is a Committee on Committee Recommendation, but I don't see his name on the agenda, on the Committee Agenda. I just asked a question.
If we don't like him, vote no. Okay, go ahead.
Actually, Mr. Hod, Mr. Janicki was the recommendation by another Commissioner that's actually on that board. So that's where I got the recommendation from.
Commissioner Bergdorff.
Mr. Chairman, I emailed the entire County Commission Eric Janicki's resume in September, and I sent it, I copied the County Commissioners, I sent it to Commissioner Miller and the rest of Committee on Committees. And then he came for the Highway Committee meeting in September, where he waited and waited, and they just let him speak. And for clarification, it is not a three-year term, they are two-year terms. We changed that in the resolution last July. So it will be a two-year term.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign, all right, go ahead. The ayes have it. All right, Division of the Assembly is called.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
And this is to point, can I direct?
It receives an overwhelming 18 votes, all right.
All right, number four is the Board of Construction Appeals.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Division of the House.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
19, 20 votes, 21 votes for, okay.
All right, and the last item, number five, General Operations, Mary Janon, I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
Division of the House.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Um, item.
Go ahead.
Item 2411-16 is to reappoint the Judicial Magistrates, and I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
2411-17 is a request to move from the Probation Department, from General Sessions Division One, which has been there since 1990. I'm going to amend this, to move the Probation Department under the Office of the Law Director and move Judicial Magistrates under General Sessions Division One.
Second.
Uh, that's a motion, is there a second?
What was the second part of the motion?
The first part was to move Probation Department under the Office of the Law Director, and then move Judicial Magistrates under General Sessions Division One, since they deal with warrants and everything else, it just makes more sense. So, and that's my motion.
All right, motion, is there a second? All right, motion and a second, Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I would, it's probably going to fail, but given what Judge Blanton stated earlier, and I also applaud Judge Blanton for pointing out the conflict and taking steps to remedy it, I would like to, my motion to suspend the rules and get Judge Blanton's, I think I'm probably going to be for this, but I'd just like to get Judge Blanton's take on this.
There's a motion to hear the judge, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. All right, Judge, if you'd come forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mansfield, you have a question? Somebody have a question, or you just want me to speak to this? The Judicial Magistrate should, in Judge McCormick's opinion, as myself, we've discussed this, as well as Judge Howard, they, Commissioners should probably report to the General Sessions Judges, because they're an extension of our office. As far as, as far as the Probation Department, I merely, I mentioned what I said before, simply because that's the way the other counties have theirs, with the probation reporting to the county executive, instead of the Law Director position, just because, just because, that's how it's done in the other surrounding counties. It's a self-sufficient, self-funding department, it needs very little supervision. We have a director there who's been the director, or she's been in probation for over 20 years. She's not going anywhere for the next several years. She has a fully-staffed office, and so that's, that's my opinion, so.
May I just ask one question, Mr. Chairman, or I guess I can ask you directly, Judge Blanton?
Sure.
Would, is, do you believe there would be any, is it would be?
Can you wait till she?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Judge Blanton, do you think there would be any conflict of interest if we were to move the?
To move the?
To lead, to the law, under Law Director?
I don't know that they would, there would be a conflict with probation, no. There wouldn't be any conflict with Commissioners, because most Commissioners around the state report to General Sessions Judges.
I'll, I'll just make a clarification, I guess, for, for your information, Judge, that some of the counties definitely is different than other counties, and the fact that we have a private act that affords for a Law Director's office, whereas other counties don't, the county mayor, I mean, county attorney reports definitely. So that's why it's different in those counties, so just wanted to clarify that, just, that's it.
All right, our county attorney has asked to make a statement.
I would be reticent to have it moved to our office without input from Mr. Sittler.
I spoke to Mr. Sittler today, and it was actually his recommendation.
Okay, all right.
All right, are we ready to vote?
I actually had a question for the judge, I don't know if we can.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I know in your initial recommendation, Judge Blanton, you had, had mentioned to go into an elected official. Can you explain, or just give some rationale behind it, going to elected official as opposed to an appointed office underneath, within the county structure?
It's a way it's always been explained to me, Mr. Nguyen, is that it has to report to somebody along the line that has the authority to approve appropriations of funds. Like, if they want a, a new copier, they would go to the requisition, would go to their head of that department, or to the elected official who's responsible for that. And they would be the one that would take it then to the General Ops, or the Budget Committee, because I know anything that comes out of probation now comes through me, and I go to the Committee to make that request. I do, I did their budget for them, and submitted it, and I don't even remember arguing, quite frankly, it was the day my son died, that I argued for their budget, for the Budget Committee on that day. So that's the reason why I suggested it be with an elected official, because I figured at some, at some point, somebody has to sign that they're approving the payroll, or they're approving this request for an acquisitions, and make sure it falls within their budget, before they present it or make appropriation to move funds from one account to another to make up for that. That's the reason, that's the explanation that I had.
Okay, so it's just mainly budgetary oversight?
Budgetary oversight's really what it is, budgetary oversight, you know, I would have the final, when they hired somebody, I, I made the decision on promoting somebody to Director. I interviewed the candidates, I made the selection for that. The Director now makes interviews for the people in probation. She comes with a recommendation to me, I had the final say-so, because I was the person that signed the new hire package. So I wanted to at least meet the person and know their background beforehand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lambert? Okay, wait just a moment, Judge.
Waiting for Carolyn to turn me on. I'm waiting, just making sure, you said, when you first got up here and spoke, to not put it, not put the Magistrates just under Division One, but just General Sessions in?
I had prior probation, I'm getting off of probation, so I'm willing to take that on as well. But obviously, I would do it in conjunction with, with, you know, any changes made. They would work for both Judge McCormick and I, and so, you know, we would both have input along with the head of the Commissioners.
Which is the way it is now, it's, it's both equal, correct?
Not probation, I did all.
No, 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 the Magistrates, I'm sorry.
The Magistrates, no, they report directly to the Law Director, they don't have anything to do with us. This would be moving them either.
Under just you.
To me, or to us jointly, either way, however you want to do it. But from a budgetary standpoint, then you'd be splitting that department in two, so it makes sense to put it under one instead of the other, because we both, we work well together, we meet monthly as a group, just to talk over issues that we've got in General Sessions anyhow. So it would, whatever the, the Commission decides to do, we'll make it work, all right? Whatever it is, we're going to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pomeroy.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, we'll place that on the board, then. Yes. Pardon?
I think there's some confusion, there's some talking going on, I think, back here, so can we restate it?
Oh, okay, who was the maker of the amendment?
My amendment is to move the Probation Department under the Office of the Law Director and move Judicial Magistrates under General Session Division One. I so move, that's my.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That receives 21 affirmative votes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we are mercifully at budget. So I, item one, approve $337,999,000 for real fire departments. Motion and second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Appropriate $38,600 for additional salary increases, I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Commissioner Janon.
I have a question, the $38,600 for salary increases, who's getting the salary increase?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yes, I, I would make that ruling, is that, isn't that, yes, the Attorney agrees with me. We're in the middle of votes, so we need to move on with that.
It's in the package.
You're, what you're voting on is a yea or nay. I think the yeas had it, that's what I ruled, but a Division of the House was not very clear on the $38,600 for additional salary increases, and it was a part of your package, I understand.
It is, yes, sir.
So, all right.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That did pass with 16 votes.
So item 2411-20, to reallocate ARPA appropriations from completed projects to Westmoreland EMS facility, I so move, and I want to give a quick background on this, if you listened in, in budget. We ultimately, we have a bunch of projects that are getting up close to the end, we need to have these dollars appropriated and allocated by the end of the year, or else we run the risk of losing them. So the Westmoreland EMS facility is one which has been rancorous, but we know that we need that. And so what we were planning on doing here was to take those funds from those projects, which we think are in danger of timeline slippage past the December 31 date, and reallocate them toward the Westmoreland EMS facility.
All right, we have a motion, and a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Item number 2411-21 is to approve an MOU relating the Health Department and ARPA, I so move.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Item 2411-22, excuse me, appropriate $11,752 to EMA for overtime for the East Tennessee deployment, I so move.
Motion, is there a second? Second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
We have one in queue, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
We have one in queue.
Mr. Mansfield?
I just had a question, I.
My apologies, it's been covered. Maybe, a question for the Finance Director is, are these, is this reimbursable through FEMA for this, these overtime hours, since it was a part of that disaster relief? I'm just, I don't know if that's.
I can, I can answer that, or, or the Finance Director, whoever. Yeah, so the way, that's right. The way we, just so that everybody can hear, the way that this. way that this played out in budget was that there were questions about how much was being, how much was being requested to FEMA versus how much was being requested through the county, and this was contingent on those two numbers aligning, if that helps answer your question.
Okay, so this is, we're approving it with a contingency that if they didn't align, this would not be approved?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Okay, been moving quick, let's see if it continues. Item 2411-23, appropriate $3 million for the Highway Department for asphalt. Just, so of note, this is, this came up last meeting, this is $3 million of the 19.5 million that we have already set aside. This is, yes, it is a new appropriation, but it is a new appropriation out of funds that we have already set aside for capital, for capital projects, so I so move.
Motion and second, Commissioner Boyd?
So I have a couple of things, but first I want to start by saying that we have to have hot mix, we don't have any money for it, so we're going to have to put some money there. But I want to make it, I want to say a few things. We don't have a number for the actual MOE, the five-year average, we don't have that number. We don't have it for this year, we don't have it for last year. The way that C Task calculates it is not statutory, it does not agree with the law. We need that number. I am saying, you can shake your head, I am saying we gotta, we gotta put money in highway, but we don't have that five-year average. So making a good decision without it is a little irresponsible, but we still gotta make, we gotta put some money in. One of the things I would like to amend that is I would like to add to the purchasing policy that the bids all go through finance. They currently, all bidding does go through finance, but I'd like to go ahead and make that clear tonight and amend this to include that we're going to update the purchasing policy, that all bids will continue as they all, as they already are going through finance. And highway currently bids are going through finance, and they agreed to that, and that has been happening. It's not in our policy, and I'd like that to be amended tonight. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, in financial management, there's been a lot of talk.
Commissioner Boyd, the attorney says that that is out of order.
Okay, I'll add it later in the discussion. Okay, I understand that. There's been a lot of emails going around, some people have said some things about how purchasing shouldn't be centralized, it's not appropriate. But as I gave all of you tonight from the last page of our audit report, from the comp toller's office, the best practices, and how our private act.
All right, I think that's correct, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's, there's some things I'm confused about. In the budget for 2425, there are two divisions of hot mix. One was the state aid, which was $1,785 and change, and then there was the rural roads, which was $1,214 and change. In the rural roads, there's 38,000 left. In the state aid, there's 911,000 left. Now, we're coming into cold times where they won't be able to use hot mix at all, and so they'll be doing other things. And that probably, if it falls within normal climatic conditions, we probably won't get back to doing hot mix till April or May, when we'll be very close to the next budget time. I think, I think $3 million is excessive, and I would like to amend it to be $1 million.
Second? Okay, a motion and a second to amend this to a million. Mr. Mansfield, is yours on that amendment?
It's on that, yes, in the main motion as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, obviously, we spoke last month when this came up, I had made the motion in highway, excuse me, in budget this summer during our hearings, that the $20 million was contingent upon the Highway Department coming over with their purchase orders and purchasing into the central accounting practices. And I did, I'm in favor of this after speaking with the finance department and hearing what he had to say and hearing the budget committee. Is, is, just a little background on why I'm voting for this amendment, because I was going to make that myself, so I'm glad Commissioner Klein did, because I was looking at that hot mix, those numbers, and because they haven't been spent yet. What, the main thing about, I'll just speak to this, is in our budget, last year, the hot mix for the rural county roads was almost a million dollars more, and this year is shortchanged by a million, so that's why I'm agreeing with this motion, we need to put that money back in for that portion, so I think it's a great idea. But mainly, it, there's a lot of stuff that was said about Kronos and the POs. Long story short is that the finance director, I believe, felt more comfortable moving forward Kronos, because it was going to be more cost-effective for the taxpayers not to use the consultants and to use the person designated to do that, and come back basically towards the budget cycle to do the purchase orders of unloading those back on. And so, just wanted to make that super clear. And also, you know, the finance department doesn't decide what the highway buys, you know, they, they just make sure what they're buying is legal and operating within their budget, which I don't think anybody doesn't want to have happen here, but I won't belabor that point. But I do agree with this and the fact that a million dollars was not in their budget this year, that was there last year for the same amount. I think we should support the million dollars, but I don't see the need for 3 million right now. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get in queue. I don't know if, so, just want to speak to a few things here. One, on a couple of comments earlier, regarding, regarding the maintenance of effort, this has been a difference of opinion, and ultimately, I would argue that the C Task as the governing body who, they, they are calculating MOE. So it's not like we've been running without MOE. Now, you can argue whether it's been calculated correctly or not, but at the end of the day, that calculation doesn't come from this body, that calculation comes from the state, and C Task is the body that the state has delegated to do that. So I, I just want to make that comment. The next comment is, I just want to explain why we set aside this amount of funding. I want to come back to the reason why and why I'm going to be against the million and for the 3 million. The whole purpose of this was an acknowledgement that we are behind on our roads after, and I'm not throwing blame at previous commissions or whatever, but we are behind on our roads. Everybody knows this, it is a huge complaint, and we recognize that we have catch-up to do. And so the point of this was realizing that we were going to, we were, one, fighting inflation, two, we know that we need to catch up on our roads. We wanted to provide a, basically a one-time capital surge fund so that we could get ahead on the roads. So I don't want to go back, there's no point in setting that aside and then taking it off piecemeal just to get us back up to where it was last year. The whole point of this was to give our highway departments the opportunity to go and pave more roads so that, you know, we can provide for a deficiency that I think everybody here acknowledges. So I'm going to be against the amendment, and the reason I'm against the amendment is because it is counter to the reason we set aside the surge funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Boyd?
I like the amendment, especially since I don't have the statutory MOE. There is an opinion for C Task, and there is the TCA code. If we got the million dollars, we pass it through, everything runs smoothly, we can take a look at what our MOE is and see where we're going to be next year, what we're going to have to put into highway next year. I don't want a tax increase. If we want a tax increase, let's go ahead and put a lot of money in roads, but we can afford so much. We have so many responsibilities in this county and so many things we need to fund. I think that it's prudent to give, to put a million dollars in now, everything keeps running smoothly, we can find out what the statutory MOE is and how much money we're going to have to put in highway next year and what our future responsibilities are. Once we cross that five-year average, we're at it forever. That's, that's it, we're going to be there. So I think a million dollars is a good idea, and then we'll see what our numbers are and see if we're going to have to raise taxes to fund like, fund the highways going forward.
Commissioner Klein?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appeal to the chairman of the, of the budget committee and anybody else, that a million dollars now will give them, will give Toby $2 million of workable cash between now and the next budget season. We can always give him more. If, if he needs another half a million or another million, that's a simple process through the budget committee and then to this, this committee, this commission here. We don't need to give more than, than we can foresee in the future, and so I would like to appeal to his sense of reason.
I just want to respond real quick, I just, it has not been simple. It has not been simple. It was, so, I'm just going to, it's not been simple. If I were in Mr. Ellis' shoes, I would not argue that this has been a simple process.
Commissioner Ring?
My district is entirely in the city limits of Gallatin, but I travel county roads, I'm going to visit friends, relatives, whatever, and I believe this is necessary. It's something we've been needing to do for a long time, and I will, I will vote against the 1 million and for the 3 million.
Commissioner Pomeroy?
Yeah, I will be voting against the amendment, and yet laughable, simple. The reality is, if I was the highway commissioner and any other department head, if you were paying attention during budget, this was all wink, wink, nod, nod. The reason why his budget was lowered, the million dollars, is because everybody told him that we're going to give him 3 million in capital to go ahead, and it was a number game. That was out there for everybody. There was emails, there was texts, there was conversations. If we're breaking it, we're breaking it, but that was going on. There's no doubt, that there's no road superintendent ever would have said, I'm going to lower my, my hot mix number this year with costs going up, if he did not believe that we were going to allocate this money, that we've been talking about now since, I mean, July? I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I get accused by a lot of people that I don't pay attention. I paid attention enough to know that when I looked at those numbers, that that was the only reason it made sense. When I called the highway director, I've been, you know, we're talking about getting money. They're going to give it to me out of capital because it doesn't affect the MOE. I, I heard all those things, but yet again, like everything else, when it comes down to actually spending money, we, we want to be conservative. Our most expensive asset we have in this county is our roads. Several hundred millions of dollars that we own. I really hope we're not planning on just letting them go away. There is something concerned about maintaining what you have. So I will be voting for the 3 million, and nothing is easy, just like getting the salaries put back in, because we all said here, when it was, hey, nobody vote for this right now, we're going to catch all that up with this half a penny, 500,000, and we debated every single one of those, every single one of them, when everybody on this potty voted and said, oh, yeah, if y'all just do this and let it go, we'll give it. Yeah, I've listened to you run your, okay, here we go. I'll, I'll finish what I'm saying. Nothing's simple, nothing's simple, because what they do is they say what they want you to hear, and then when it comes time to spending money, they want to pull it back. It's the old, I'm for roads, I'm for schools, I'm, I just don't want to vote for it. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. A yes vote will be for the million dollars. No, if it's a no vote, we're back to the main motion.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
14 and 9 a vote, 14, 15 noes would mean that we are back to the main motion. And seeing no one in the queue, I'll ask if that be placed on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Receives 16 affirmative votes and it passed, 17, 18, and it passes. Actually, 19 to 3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion, or, excuse me, item 2411-24 is to appropriate $17,186 to the county commission budget for education for incentive payments. I so move, but I will be voting against.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
Division?
Each commissioner, record your vote.
14, 14 to 10, it's a negative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moving on now to item number eight, which was pulled off the consent agenda, this was $20,000 appropriated for, for an architect to hire for the Millerville EMS station, I so move.
All right, motion and a second. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do have questions on this one, and I would just like to ask, can I get some general background on this? I think this was discussed as far as the MOU for Millerville EMS Fire Station, released some improvements to be done to that fire station for the EMS facility, as like back in September, I want to say. But is, are we still talking about, is that the same project?
It is.
Okay, so that's the same project, and at that time, we, it was stated that this is just so we can go in and get estimates. So can, can we share what the estimates are for these improvements?
I, I don't know that we have estimates, Mr. Chairman.
No.
So we don't have any estimates?
Not that I know.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I got one estimate from a Goodlettsville architect about two months ago. He gave me a verbal roughly $13,000. I am meeting a, an architect the day after tomorrow at 11 o'clock, and I have one other that I have, I'm still waiting for a price coming from. So I will have three estimates.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear that those, that those are not official estimates that we have received.
No, they're, they're just.
I think we realize that, yeah. All right, Commissioner Nguyen, do you have another point?
Yeah, we'll just continue on. So I, I'm, I'm confused a little bit because, so we're going to pay $20,000 for an architect to do $13,000 worth of work? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I think that's maybe correct, the way I understand it.
It is a, this was a, this is common practice, which we've, we've done with many, many items. When, when, when we seek services, we have to, we appropriate an up to amount, a not to exceed amount. This was the not to exceed amount that we put together in budget in order to get the ball started, because again, we all recognize that there is a need for the EMS facility. And if there is a different not to exceed amount, that, that's the process, and this is not, we haven't been following a different process here that we have for other items. If there is a different not to exceed amount, I, you know, I'm sure this body would love to hear it.
I'm not questioning that, I'm, I just, what is the not to exceed amount? Because I don't even know that I'm aware of that number. What, what did we, because back when we discussed this, we had no figures, it was just, hey, we got to go in and get some estimates done, you know, we're just, just being good neighbors. And, and we had, like a number was roughly thrown out, 15 to 20,000, and, and here we are at our first milestone at 20K. We're already at the budget that was stated earlier, whenever we talked about the MOU to go in and do the work. So what, what is the not to exceed amount? What are, what is our ceiling? I asked this question back in September, and we had no answer. So I'm hoping we have an answer now that we're trying to allocate money towards a project. What is our cap?
So this is for the initial, the initial services, and so there is a cap of $20,000, which we will put forward in order to receive this. We, we can change that cap, someone here can change that cap. But as of now, we put a cap on of $20,000.
Okay, so we still don't know what it's going to cost, and I was under the impression that we only had to have an architect if a project was over, was it 45 or 50,000?
It is.
So I, I still, I'm confused, why are we hiring an architect at this point?
So, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, that, one, there, it's not just fifty thousand. If you, if you materially change a structure, then that, that can also trigger it, and this potentially would do that. Two, to, I think, the previous point that, uh, the commenter made here, uh, we don't know what that amount could be, and because it is possible that this would exceed fifty thousand dollars, it makes sense to go ahead and get a architect to, to build a realistic estimate. We all, of course, hope that it comes back much less. This is, this is the same, uh, exact process we've had on many, many other, uh, items, which I believe that commenter has voted on, has argued on the other side of, so this is just the process, and we just want to get it started. If, if there's another number out there, uh, ten thousand, five thousand, I, I'm sure this body would be happy to hear it, or I can stand up here and continue to answer questions.
No, and, and I, I appreciate the, the information, and, and, I, I get the process, I understand what we're trying to do, it's very logical, I, I hundred percent get it, but it's, it's one where it, we've used a different standard for different people, and then when it comes to projects like this, to where it's like, we, we don't even have a, uh, an estimated, okay, we could go up to this potentially, um, and, and we're already hiring architects for this stuff. I get it, we're gonna structurally alter the building, that's not what we talked about when we did the MOU, it's like, oh, I got a couple windows in my garage, I'll give us, you know, I mean, it was, it was literally like a, a nothing project, and, and now we're talking about, uh, structural altercations, where we've gotta have engineering work done, and I'm not against any of it, I'm just trying to understand, uh, how do we get here? Because, you know, I expressed concern back when we first discussed this, that we, we don't have a fully vetted process or project here, we, we're, we're signing ourselves up for an unknown number to do work, and then here we are. So, that, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make that point, um, you know, I, I'll vote for it, because I, we gotta get the work done, but I, I, I do want to just point this out, that, uh, it, it's maddening at times. I, I think Commissioner Janong even talked about some of the, the maddening stuff that we do. Here's another maddening thing that we do, you know, uh, is, is, we'll, we'll require this from somebody over here, but then we completely ignore it over here, and it's okay. So, that's all I've got, thanks, sir.
Commissioner Rogers? All right. Question's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
No.
I'm not going to call for a division unless someone asks for it, but it's, uh, we're back to the main motion then. Uh, Commissioner Becker?
Call for the question, sir.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, call for the question, all right, place it on the board.
Is, point of information, uh, Mr. Chairman, is this, are we, this is division for call for the question, or are we, have you ruled?
No.
This is the main?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I call for division of the House? I thought we were gonna do that right now.
Uh, I don't know, we may be in, uh, the attorney may think that we're in the middle of voting, uh, procedure now.
It, it's my understanding that the vote happened and the Chairman, um, sustained the vote, uh, recognized the vote as it was.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Twenty-two to two, affirmed.
Motion to adjourn.
No, oh, wait. Um, I, I would like to say that, uh, you will be receiving information on school tours from the Director of Schools. He has sent me a copy, so be expecting that in your mail, and, uh, I would encourage everyone to tour the schools. If you have any questions about schools, this is your opportunity.